And it has grown to what it has today. We just had our third annual RABAS competition at the high school. Our D team again took excellence, the highest one there. So we have a quite a, it's not quite the dynasty of the rest of the team because that's like, what, thirty, forty years old. But for seven years we've been doing it, we have done very, very well. And again, I'm so proud to call these guys my colleagues.
Thank you.
Before you go, is there anyone that wants to ask any questions or more clarification? Not that he doesn't go in and talk.
The board, every year when they go through this, thinking about the budget. Like you say, we have a comprehensive high school. And that's one of the reasons we have a comprehensive high school. Many places do not offer it. You know, we have HADAs here in town. We can't offer quite everything that, but we give the kids a pretty good exposure. Let me use that. And then placement for those who did the work these gentlemen do. So we really appreciate it. Otherwise, we wouldn't have those opportunities for our kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seriously, thank you. All right. Global participation. Board of Education's called participation in classes because people's please leave their comments to freedom. Because they offer objective comments on school operations and programs that concern them. Board will not create any expression of personal complaints or mandatory comments that the Board of Education personnel and students or against any one person connected with the Danbury Public School System. Having said that, I also want to ask that if we're listening to everything you say, we do not answer right away. Our administrators take care of that within forty-eight hours. All right? So the first person I have here is Gary Mummert. That's you. Hi.
It's me. Thank you. Matt Chair, Dr. Sal. Go on.
We'll be right back.
Okay. And Dr. Glass. Board members and attendees. My name is Gary Mummert, and I speak here this evening on behalf of the NAACP, Greater Chapter in Danbury, and as a proud member of the chapter. I recently watched the October thirteenth board meeting video. Appreciate that. With particular focus on the HR presentation by Kimberly Thompson. Personally, we all appreciated the depth and the breadth of that presentation. And we at NAACP do recognize the challenges that were mentioned. This evening, our first request is we would like to have the data that was presented during that meeting on various slides. This would be useful in educating our own membership and add to the information that is in the notes perhaps. Just not sure if all the data showed up there. Secondly, we'd like to focus on some questions around the existing school board policy on affirmative action. While we do appreciate the policy exists, we believe that the policy should be reviewed, updated, and most importantly to us, affirmed for the good of the whole, especially our youth and children. We do note that the current Board of Education goals just approved do not mention the desire for diversity of the staff or action plans or goals for staffing. This we do find quite concerning. Now currently, the nineteen ninety-nine policy states that affirmative action refers to special efforts to increase at every level of the workforce, representation of African-Americans. And here I'm paraphrasing Hispanics, women, and others. While we believe and expect that all of us here this evening share that hiring of more diverse teaching staff is important, we at NAACP are very concerned about special efforts that could be done to hire administrators and principals of color. If the data is that eighty percent of the administrators are white and with a decentralized hiring system, we really wonder how affirmative action for teacher hiring will get us to the place we want to be. What incentives do administrators have to hire for diverse staffing? And what support and emphasis do they have from leadership? Are principals and administrators accountable and evaluated in any way that supports hiring for diversity? Do administrators have time and budget to go to fairs or to visit places like Delaware State, Towson University, Cheney University, or even the University of Bridgeport? To sum up in this area, we'd like to know what specifically, no, not what. Who specifically is accountable for creating out affirmative action policy? And if goals will be attached to that policy? Let me drill down just a little bit on a couple of aspects. I'm told that in the past interviews for administrative and teaching positions had a team which included a person of color. Reportedly, this is fallen by the wayside. Can this be reinstated, both for administrators and teachers? Recently, we also heard about the aspirant program. Thank you, Dr. Glass, for filling us in on that. We do have some questions. Can teachers apply for this program? I'll wrap up this. Can teachers apply for the program? Are persons hand-selected? What are the eligibility requirements? I would like to say just a couple more things, but I'll wrap up. Dr. Glass. The budget is coming up. I heard a number of issues where grants weren't coming in. There weren't enough funds to do certain things. Maybe now's the time for leadership to make some adjustments to the budget so we can get on the path toward effective diversity of staff. I do appreciate your listening and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, the next person is Rachel Lee.
No.
No? Oh, okay. Sorry. Just wanted to bring you two onto the stage.
Put your name on there. Put it on. You have to do that.
Hi.
Thank you so much. Okay. Uh, we can send a calendar. I'll go for you, please.
That the Board of Education approved the items on the consent calendar of sixteen dash one four nine through sixteen dash one fifty-one as recommended.
Second by the ladders. Before we vote on it, I would like to thank Danielle Chance, Jessica Duncan, Nancy Fury, Randy Brown, Dan, Mona, Mel, Donato, and Anita. The service to Danbury. Those are the people that are designing it. Haven't done it in a while. These are the people who have done this remiss. I'm sorry. All right, do you want to do second, Mullen Baker?
Aye.
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 Those are yours.
Okay. I'm sorry. All righty. We also should thank Trace Burns for providing the services. Is there an employee representative on the student?
Thank you, Esther.
Is that it? Great, no question. Okay, next. Student representatives. I have the table for them. Yes, hi. All right, you want to, Danbury, hi. You want to start? Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. I'm Alessandra Rivera, President of City Council.
I'm Tiava Michael. I'm Secretary of City Council. At DHS, we have entered the second, into the second quarter of the first semester. Two weekends ago, we held a very successful homecoming dance with a show now with six hundred students. Board of Governors was able to raise over three thousand dollars in ticket sales for this dance.
Last Thursday, we chose one advisory from each grade as a winner of our door decorating contest with the theme of school spirit. Each class that participated in the contest will receive Krispy Kreme donuts and seniors will be rewarded with a full practice next week. Next Thursday, we will be honoring our veterans during the advisory periods by having students write letters to the veterans, and we will be sending them out for the holiday season. There's also a lot of complaints about the sixty-dollar parking permit from the upper classroom.
Was it not enough?
Oh, it's more than that. Upbeat on the success of this school-wide activity will be sent to Congress. Thank you.
Hi. Diane Hernandez. Good evening. On Friday, October twenty-first, twelve students and two ACE teachers attended the Dodge Poetry Festival in New York, New Jersey. There were close to ten thousand students at the event held at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center. Students heard readings from commentary from famous poets and foremost US poet, Laureate Billy Collins. In addition, students heard the performances from the Parkinson Sisters. Word of poetry was turned into music on the spot. The trip was both educational and inspirational for all. I heard a lot of good things about everyone that went and enjoyed it. Twelve students, S.A.S., participated and volunteered for the annual Halloween on the Green hosted by the city center in Danbury. Students stuffed over five hundred fifty bucks, ran poodles at the event, and assisted at the Danbury Green on Saturday, October twenty-eighth event. A good time to have, I hope. ACE is proud to recognize Dani Arujo as the Exchange Club Student of the Month. Dani spoke very eloquently at the Exchange Club ceremony and recognized many teachers and administrators that have helped them along the way. From what we've heard, Dani rocked the whole event with a great speech. Select ACE students are participating in weekly intervention groups up to strengthen skills in reading and math. Through the use of the iXcel learning software program, students are receiving additional supports on Tuesdays and Thursdays to hopefully meet goal on their upcoming STAR assessment. Last week was our first week and students were engaged in software and seemed interested in wanting to do well. ACE conducted a mock election on Monday, November seventh, and were presented with a copy of an election ballot that was very much like the real ballot to prepare them for voting in the future. It is our hope that those that registered to vote last month will officially vote on Election Day and are more informed regarding voting procedures, candidates, and issues.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your, thank you very, very much. Yeah. I would like to ask a question. You want to tell me about the sixty-dollar permit?
I will. So it's sixty-five dollars for juniors and then sixty dollars for seniors and sixty-five for any other classmate that drives too. And if we don't have this parking permit, then basically we get fines and we have to come ISS for the day and...
I said a fee to peanut butter soon.
Thank you.
If I could add, what was the fee previously?
I think it's always been the same.
So it's always been that, that sixty, sixty-five dollars?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But it's not always implemented throughout the year, which is why it's a bit different for this year. Because they tried scaring the seniors last year with the whole period or the two-month period of just doing it. And then after, no one got it and I'm not in trouble, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for recording that. You guys don't have to stay, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trust me, you've worked long enough to know that you're tired of school.
Thank you.
Okay, we're about to have a presentation, and it's a big presentation. Yes, I am, and it's a long one because most of us are very tired. This year is a big day. And it's our student committee is going to present tonight on this table.
I'm gonna turn around. I've got some folks that are here to speak to it. You guys want to come on? Come on up.
Oh, it's a pile of...
Kara and, yeah, because Bill has a presentation. We've been working to get us sort of focused and to make it explicit. We're gonna go through the presentation. And then I've got folks that can speak to it in more detail, the things that we're doing. Just take a minute. Board members, if you look up and see Danbury High School Coherence Plan, you look next to it, you see the middle school coherence plan, elementary, and here's a district one right here. All of the things that we're doing are focused through this in terms of coherence plan you developed two years ago based on our goals. So it does have a pathway to student achievement. So they're part of our goals along with the group mention tonight and a lot of other things that are going on. This is our primary responsibility. And that's why I brought people here to speak to it, because I think it's a good thing for you to be in the form. Okay. Bill, right?
Please write through, Diane. The only two uses I've been asked to ask you all have questions. Please wait until the end of the presentation. All right. I need just a second.
Rachel? Rachel, do you mind pushing that? Thank you.
Mrs. Elkes was nice enough to ask everybody what I was gonna ask. If you would please hold your comments to the end for your questions. Reason being is that you'll see, as we remind the board of the goal, this is extraordinarily dense. It's the heart, as south of the school system. Everything we do revolves around this, so we brought in our team. We want to thank them publicly for the work they've done on this and the work they've done to make all this work come alive. So the board knows that the mission, but ultimately it leads to having all, all means all, all of our graduates being college and/or career-ready. And as you know, the coherence plan was put together to focus the district. When the dust settled, we chose two items, argumentation based upon evidence, so students taking a position and defending it with real evidence, and then being able to solve authentic twenty-first century problems. The coherence challenge is always alignment. That's the key to all of our work. So you ask the question in a group, is it really that hard to herd cats? And the answer is depends on the cat. In our case, size does matter. You look at the size of our system, we're still, I believe, the seventh largest school system out of one hundred sixty-nine. In Connecticut, there are a lot of moving parts with this. But then I can go very quickly through this. Leave time for you if you have questions at the end for our team. The idea between the three sets of circles, on the left is student goals, middle is adult or the practitioners, the board, and the far right is for the organization as a whole. And that bottom set or fragment is designed to achieve vertical and horizontal alignment. That's hopefully our goal. Good news, this is alive and well. Questions were asked over time. Is this really happening in the district? This is one principal's office. And you can see on the left, student learning. You can see in the middle, professional learning or adult learning, local goals, and then finally the organization. We took three individual shots. That's the work that they have kids doing every day at the school. This is the work that they have the staff doing. You'll see on the far right, top map, bottom literacy. And over here, the board will see on the left, second sheet down, the coherence plan. We've talked to you about data-wise, that's the blue thing at the bottom left. And you'll hear more about the instructional pie, which is in the middle. This is your first goal. This is a daunting goal. It incorporates so much, and that's why we really tried. We spent two weeks building this presentation, trying to split it down to get our points across in a cogent way. So we have six different areas that we're gonna focus on tonight, and again, very rapidly. I have copies for you at your place that provide much more detail and will certainly be willing tonight or over time to answer questions in detail. So take them one at a time. You've heard about our instructional timetable, probably from many, nicknamed the instructional pie in the district. Sal commissioned a consultant from California to come in and look at our work at the elementary level. They found that there were some gaps in what were actually, what was actually taking place. Chris and Pam have worked very hard over time to build the literacy program and didn't in fact have all the components, just that they weren't being done with fidelity. This is what a three-hundred-and-eighty-five-minute school day looks like from a teacher and administrator's perspective and a kid's perspective. And you can see every single minute is jam-packed. Another way of arraigning is to make it a little bit easier to understand is the instructional pie. Each one of the different slices of that pie have different colors. You can see it talks about reading, it talks about writing, it talks about math, science, social studies, special subject areas, lunch, et cetera. It's a tremendous amount of work on the part of a teacher to adhere to this with fidelity again on a daily basis. Elementary Language Arts has taken that and tried to operationalize it in a way that makes sense. They're really working to build a cohesive K-five literacy program that integrates all of the components of a balanced literacy model. Word study became a big focus, which is phonics, spelling, and vocabulary, the ability for kids to decode, to encode, understand vocabulary, et cetera. All the work that's been done is all research-based, meaning we didn't make it up. We're really focusing on national best practices, research. Students even in literacy use something called manipulatives. It's kind of like refrigerator magnets, where they're doing things like having magnetic letters, making words, breaking words apart, prefixes, suffixes, et cetera. And then vocabulary instruction, which is a big part, especially building the background knowledge of our kids with vocabulary, starts with teachers simply reading to kids, whether it's a story or other forms of text. A big initiative for us this year, you may have heard of it in the past, but I'll sponewize and bifurcate it. K-one TC Reading and Writing Units of Study. TC is short for Teachers College, which is the educational arm of Columbia University in New York. They have a full-blown curriculum for kindergarten and first grade by units of study. In grades two through five, we're using the Danbury units that Chris and Pam and their team created or the TC units of study. The bifurcation comes from the Title I schools, the house, and the non-Title I schools that have nots because attending TC, Chris, I can't remember exactly, I think it's like five hundred dollars a person during the summer at minimum. So it's very expensive to send hundreds of teachers through this. We decided as a district this year, we're gonna have units of study for all K-one. Chris, Pam, the language arts specialist, have a lot of work around helping to build capacity. And two through five, they have a choice either core. It's student-centered, so it focuses on the child constantly. They're really pushing to create independence around reading, thinking, and writing. There are multiple opportunities for kids to have reinforcement, feedback, and practice to deepen their learning. And in some degree, we're integrating science and social studies. Not as deeply as we'd like, but there is an integration effort underway. In mathematics, K-eight level, we've implemented a program called Investigations. It's a math program, not a curriculum, meaning it's supplemental to our curriculum. We've used as our mantra for years, the curriculum drives instruction, not a program. You can see that in August, it was launched for all K-three teachers as well as special education and English language learner teacher, ELO, valuable teachers. Deepening program implementation essentials in November. Train the trainer ways that we train our own in-house people. You train one, and that one trains twenty, fifty, a hundred, et cetera. And then PLCs is just shorthand jargon for professional learning communities. These are small groups of educators who get together as a learning community to try and deepen their own knowledge. And you can see that dates throughout the winter. Additional in-house PD sessions and on poker, the full-day professional development session, focused on two through five and the idea of instructional strategies. Teach to the national standards. Again, turnkey training, the trainer sessions, we're gonna be blowing those out in the future. And then Tuesday, and the board knows when you adopted your calendar, we have two one-hour release sessions, and we're using some of those sessions for professional development for literacy and literacy. At the four-eight level, and again, it's a very aggressive year for us, and it's a very aggressive role that the board set. We think it's a good goal, but very aggressive. We're working on what we call problem of practice, learner-centered problem of practice. And we're providing coaching to teachers around the work that has to be done. They are not only coaching, job embedded professional development and reflection, but they're also collecting data to inform our decision-making. And then we have a big drop-off in data, and you'll see when Karen, Megan, and I do the presentation coming up on assessment and data findings, five to six, eight to nine, big drop. It's across the country. Research says kids have a really hard time coming around small elementary to what they vision as a massive middle school, or relatively small middle school eighth grade to a massive high school the size of a small city. So we have that drop-off. We're trying to create greater alignment and vertical articulation. Common formative assessments or CFA simply mean it's not a big ticket end of the year or an SAT, but these small assessments that take place over time. And they're common to all of us, so we all give the same assessments, which allows us to compare and contrast our findings that we find. Teacher A has better performance than teacher B. We probe a little more deeply, and maybe that teacher's doing something that the rest of us can learn from. And we, the strongest way of really diagnosing students is analyzing their work. Many years ago, those board members who were here, like Mrs. Cooper, remember the LASW kits that we created, looking at student work to see what we can glean from the artifacts of learning. Continuing with our four-eight work, you can see we had some facilitated sessions. We also had building-based sessions, really promoting the concept of very specific, very immediate diagnostic feedback to kids, helping kids reflect on the reasonableness. Two plus two, how much? Four hundred. Is that really reasonable? Let's pull that apart. And our kids sometimes give us these wild answers. Questioning strategies that teachers can ask, designed to go far below the surface. Kids typically make certain common errors. They forget to invert before they multiply. So we want to make sure that we look at student work and realize where the mistakes are and how we can correct them. Mathematical models and student discourse means simply the models we use to teach math, but also having kids talk about their learning, talk with one another, talk with the group, talk with the teacher. And the idea of differentiation simply means one size doesn't fit all. So how we can actually, to the greatest extent possible, differentiate our instruction. We have an analogous situation at the middle school in English Language Arts. We've been working to blend these two areas, reading, writing, English, et cetera. CCSS, it stands for Common Core, and we have a new program in place, Expedentiator, Expert, Ex-But, Dictionary Learning. I still have a problem with that. Karen, her team looked at many programs, and they finally settled on this. Why? Because it's very engaging for kids, they're very compelling topics. And the idea of cognitive engagement, my mind is really engaged instead of just seeing they're being compliant. The board's goal, career and/or college-ready, and this is aligned with that career and workplace antecedents for success. Kids really participate in original research, which is very exciting for kids. It's designed to build teacher capacity, so it's not one and done. Over time, we want to grow our teachers, we want to grow our students. And it really, we've moved very heavily, for many other folks who've done other presentations, talking about inquiry and having kids wondering why this is taking place and fosters critical creative thinking skills and builds their craft. You can see the timeline here. It looks a little bit strange possibly because it didn't start with the elementary deal of a launch in August. This is a work in progress, so the prep work is going on from beginning of the year through part of February in grade-level PLCs, just to do the planning and the collaboration needed to launch this. In February through May, it'll be the pilot implementation. And then in May, since we're diagnostic prescription, we collect data from teachers via feedback. And then in June, we look at the analysis of all of this and prep and use those data sets to inform our full launch of implementation for the coming school year. World Language was another big issue area focused for the board. Maybe we should have did more with getting world language beyond just AIS. And Gus, on his team, looked at this as well, some other work for English Language Learners. To that end, they settled on Rosetta Stone as a pilot in a few schools. E-learning means it's digitally based. It runs the gamut from beginner to intermediate, the way we're using it. There are many different languages, but we chose Spanish to move forward. And it's really designed to develop basic conversational skills. Buenos dias, por favor. Muchas gracias. That kind of stuff. Not really heavy duty, Spanish level proficiency. The idea of building vocabulary and working through grammar. Again, immediate feedback comes from the digital environment. And something that's really a struggle always for every world language teacher anywhere in the country or the world is learning how to speak like a native speaker. So pronunciation is really a big thing. And the more accurate you can sound like a native speaker, the more it builds a student or adults' confidence. Imagine learning is another pilot that we have going on in a few of our elementary schools. Software, again, provides dynamic language and literacy. We went through the training, it's a very dynamic, exciting program. The adults ask that they can stand longer than just the training session. The adults ask that they can stay on longer than just the training session. We talked about acceleration. We don't have as much time as we used to have. It's really tied up. Every minute of the day is a cognitive force. We're working on seeing if there's ways of kids acquiring language at a faster rate. And Imagine Learning, according to the research that we've looked at so far, strongly suggests that it does accelerate English language acquisition. We're using it with our ELL students and a few other kids as well. And so line of well-known recommendations, meaning they are clearing out what works for teaching, et cetera. So it's got national research behind it. It's not a fly-by-night program that we came back with. Project-based learning, very exciting for kids. This, just as the name implies, it's around projects. Some examples at Broadview and Rogers Park, kids have to think like a historian. They have to think like a curator of a museum. You can see at the three grade levels, they studied these three areas for their project. And then at Niedus Park, typically with project-based learning, almost always there's a culminating project, a culminating presentation. And so they presented a museum exhibit tied to a museum, and that was particular just a little bit. And it's a way of not only demonstrating the learning, but also celebrating what they've learned. Rogers Park, it's something combining a multidisciplinary approach, science for language health, celebration of the Three Sisters, beans, corn, and squash. In science, you can see they plant, maintain, and harvest the crops, so it's real, authentic application. In Spanish, they talk about cooking, which is indigenous to a lot of the Spanish folks, with the Three Sisters as part of their cuisine. In health, they talk about the nutritional benefits of this. And then finally, they all amalgamate it together to create a celebration of the harvest. West Side, which really is the vashkin of exploratory learning and project-based learning, inquiry-based learning, but we've really worked to export that as the board has requested, our original design for West Side. Global Studies, students investigate a historical issue, they think like a historian. They construct a history-related project, and they present it on National History Day. If you haven't been to this, it's amazing what the kids have done. They've gone so deeply that I think they're gonna give Magoa High School one for their money. It's that level of rigor. And of course, it gives an opportunity to compete at a state or national level. There's an analog to that. We have Global Studies, we also have a staff program. And many of the members of the board have been judges before at the invention convention. Other members of our staff have been where the kids look at a problem, they create an invention to solve that problem, it's based on their personal interest. It's what I'm curious about. Some of the creations that they come up with are absolutely amazing. Then kids are also asked to perform authentic scientific tasks. So they have to think like a scientist and act like a scientist. And again, it's the same as with Global Studies, compete at the state and national level. If you go to West Side, you see all kinds of awards that the schools won. Our last part of this is SRBI, Scientific Research-Based Intervention. You may also hear the term RTI, responsive intervention. It's a national movement. It's originally, it's designed basically to keep kids out of special ed and where not, special needs youngsters. And there used to be an overabundance, abundance of forwarding kids to special ed because I gave a shot, didn't work, and so these youngsters have to have special needs. No, not necessarily at all. Our biggest challenge with SRBI is resources, both in terms of time and people. The board has served us many times, talked about our diagnostic prescriptive model. It's a medical model, it's just the way the medical profession works. There's a problem, let's do deep level diagnosis. And once we understand the root cause of that problem, we come up with an instructional prescription. And then it's recursive. If you ask them, call me in the morning, how it works. If you know it as well as to help, let's continue to look at the root cause and instructional prescription. Very complex area of our work. You're hearing us talk more about results, driven by outcomes, driven by outputs. Outputs are things we do, everyday activities, but those in and of themselves aren't enough. They have to lead to demonstrable outcomes, which in turn lead to the achievement of the results that we desire. So this is a flow chart that we created last year. We're operationalizing this year to help with our work. We've picked a series of critical needs that have to be addressed. These are our current areas. If you notice in the bottom left, contents of the digital repository, what that environment looks like. We just came to closure on that, which is a really nice undertaking. A big team came together and said, these are the pieces of information we're gonna capture, the problems, the strategies that we use, who's gonna do it, how often was it done, what were the results, et cetera. And lastly, I just wanted to give you a couple pages of the kinds of things we're doing. These are just examples, there are tons and tons and tons of these. But you know we have adopted STAR testing, we've now expanded it to all grades of K-12. At high school, there's a tutoring center, which has five interventionists, which I'll explain in a minute. We also have the after-school tutoring program that's begun. You can see the subject areas, they must have reported it. We have Twilight School designed to help our ELL students. We have, as I mentioned, interventions. These are, as we call them respectfully, seasonal workers, you know, a hundred days a year, typically Monday through Thursday. And they could be teachers who wanted to get positions and for one reason or another they didn't, or they could be teachers who have retired and they wanna come back and continue to work. At the elementary level, we have one as a base for every one of the 13 elementary schools. If you're a Title I school, you have supplemental funds, and at your discretion, you can hire more interventionists if you wish. At the middle school level, we have eight. At ACE, we have one, and then at the high school, we have five. Read 180 and System 44 programs, they're designed to support literacy acquisition. The workshop model works very well for many kids, it doesn't work well for all kids. And so this model typically has Read 180, three stations where a small group instruction by a teacher, there's time on a computer with headphones, and the kids get real-life feedback. And then there's an independent piece for the youngsters. System 44 is a precursor to that for kids who have real low-level needs, needs at a very low level in terms of their development in phonics and things like that. Mobimax, there are many different iterations of this, but the one we're using is a piece for math. At the middle school, we have an after-school math intervention program that the board has asked for for a while, and through Harry's work and Christie's work and the work of the administrators, we've been able to launch that. You've heard the analog tonight from ACE talk about iXL. Those two, iXL and the Alex Math Programs that ACE designed to provide supplemental support for those youngsters. Rachel is here tonight. A big thing is vertical alignment. If you've talked to a typical art, music, PE teacher, media specialist at the elementary level, and say, when was the last time you spoke to somebody at the middle school level? They'll say, years ago, in the middle school, years ago, in high school. So we're just starting, just had this week, vertical alignment of teachers and those content areas coming together, creating a vision for it looks like a K-12 basis and what reasonable outcomes we should achieve with the youngsters, and then backwards planning how we're gonna achieve those. And lastly, SRBI manuals, there's a, it's like a board policy statement in a sense. There's a manual, a how-to guide at the elementary, at the middle, and the high school. And they're currently being aligned to make sure that there's vertical articulation, not just for record-keeping purposes, but that helps. If I'm a middle school person and I get incoming elementary kids, and I suddenly identify that they have some performance problems, I wanna know what went into, what were the efforts that went into this over the course of their six years in elementary school, and the same thing at the high school over the K-eight continuum. Those are the big things that we're dealing with for the year. And if you open it now, you have questions, the team is right here.
Your question. My question is, I think this is a great overview for the board, and so certainly in detail. My thought is, are there components of this that we can disseminate to the parents so that they understand what we're doing? And so they don't have as much of a frustration as to, my child is learning this in school and in class, I don't understand it myself, and I can't help the, my child with its homework. The other thing, the Rosetta Stone program, it's good, how many people know about it? Is there a way that we can take certain aspects of this and let the community, the parents, somehow understand what we're doing and have them share in this? As a board, you know, I think it's interesting and it's great to know what we're doing. But I think equally as important, I think the parents have to be educated to work with the teachers and understand what critical thinking means. Not everybody understands it. Not everybody may understand why the rope tables of two times two, et cetera. What that is, is out the window, and you have to look at it differently. So what are we doing to perhaps educate the parents in that concept? I know we have a big district, but it's just a thought process. Sometimes, you know, I hear people saying, it's not only in every community. I just was talking to somebody who's from Boston, and they were saying they're very frustrated because some of the schools tell the parents, don't help the child with the homework because you don't know the method that we want the student to interpret it. And then there's a friction at the house. The student's frustrated because they don't have the answer. The parent's frustrated because they can't tell him it's two plus two is four. And so what I'm looking to do is say, okay, this is very detailed. Is there components of this that we could streamline and bring it down to a layman's term and somehow disseminate it to the schools? How we do it, I don't know. Is what I'm saying possible or practical? And would it help the teachers if they had more of a integration with parents, more of a harmony with parents, so that everybody's on the same page and focused in the same direction?
Sure, I mean, happy shirts with Sal though, explaining.
I'd like to respond to the parent involvement here with the nights that we have.
Well, in the literacy and the elementary schools usually have several literacy and literacy nights. And they are in the fall, I mean, different times depending on the school. They are often focused around the curriculum and what parents can do to help. So those are in place, out there as many as we need, you know. The issue, I know one principal had one all scheduled a couple of weeks ago and was unable to get a Spanish translator to show up. So then there were so many Spanish-speaking people, she rescheduled, you know. So we run into issues, but at the elementary, there are, these newsletters go home. That's, you know, just to keep in touch with it at the elementary. Part of Title I, it's a requirement to have the parents on the boards when the principals are making these plans, so we know for sure there is a connection there. But I would say every school does a minimum of one math and one literacy night. And those that have other fundings or means of support do several, of course, the year. I'm sure that it's room for more.
Derek, please.
Yeah, Derek, we've just started at the middle school level, some parent informational kind of brochures, few sort of synopsis of when a new unit is being introduced, you know, what the content is about, and sort of unpacking some of the things that might be unfamiliar and just sort of a heads-up of, hey, this is kind of what the kids are gonna be working on, and you'll be seeing something. So we just started that in humanities at the middle school level. You know, I think about tools that we have, we can definitely do a better job, for sure. And as a parent of two kids in grade school, still, I understand that, especially with things like math, that, you know, new concepts in math. Things like Khan Academy, we can definitely find ways to do better jobs of getting parents familiar with some of the tools that not only, not only we send the kids to, you know, to go for help, but also the parents. There are videos, how to break down certain math problems and concepts that are largely unfamiliar to folks who've been schooled in a completely different manner. And so as we try to help our kids, there are videos, there are practice activities, all which are free. And more and more, there are free resources that come online as Common Core continues to build and as we kind of catch up with it. So we can definitely do a better job of trying to make parents aware of how to access those things in the future.
Actually, I have two questions. First one, elephants for Miller. The interventionists in the middle school, I've noticed eight, how many does each school have?
We have, we have one each, scheduled to have one math, one literacy, and they rotate one in each building, and then there's a fourth one that kind of fills in the gaps between them.
Okay, so how many at Broadview, Rogers Park, any given day, two?
Well, one. So there's one in each, one for math, one for literacy, each of the buildings. And then there's sort of an extra one that floats, and you sort of look at the data and the numbers and where that they would be best served.
And how many would you say, if you guys would know, is how many kids on a daily basis do they see? Because middle schools are, you know, we're gonna have a hundred range, two of them and 600 on the other.
Yeah, so we have, just so, when we hire interventionists, because it's only a hundred-day period that we hire them for, they're staggered, so they don't kind of start with the school year. We finish up with our regular hires first, we get the school year started. We start to see how students are doing in their classroom in the first couple of weeks of school, and we start to identify kids who'd best be served by interventionists. And so right now, those groups are just forming right now. And so an interventionist, because it should be small group instruction, can only see, you know, five, six, seven, eight, you know, at a most during a block or a time period or a snippet. So their work is extremely important and vital to our mission of trying to close the achievement gap. But they, but we can't, you know, one per, for a large middle school, you know, you could certainly use two, three, four, you know, per grade, you know. So, you know, one is really a drop in the bucket, and so then we have to be very prescriptive about who gets, you know, those services. So it becomes a little bit difficult, but we're certainly thankful that we have the ones that we do have, given our budget constraints over the last couple of years. So certainly anytime that we can add to that would be great, but, you know, certainly we're not hitting as many kids as we wanna hit.
I agree, I think they're a great tool to, you know, like small group, because you know, a teacher has a class, they're doing class for interventionists that have a small group. It's very effective, and I wish we could have a lot more. I think they work really well. My second question is about the Read 180 program, a great program. It's only offered in sixth grade, right? Any intention of, because that had a great success the first year, any intention of?
We had quite a gap in terms of, yeah, that train in sixth grade. And what we're doing Read 180, after some research, was simply try to find where they gather and then put in our fingers in the dike, quite frankly. We've added, I think we're at, how many students at sixth grade?
We have a couple hundred kids in the program across the, between the middle school and high school.
Yeah, 220, then we have the Read, then we have System 44, then we have ninth grade as well. Okay, these are all based on phonics and work that these kids couldn't assimilate during the case.
Yeah, I think it's a great work.
And what we'll be doing next year is transition to seventh grade. But we're trying to funnel it down, not funnel it this way. Go down, try to get our resources down there. It is really, really expensive, and we had to, you know, focus on that. We could have serviced more kids, but staff, it goes into a big ordeal for us. But what we have now, if it's successful, extending the day, you talked before. We have people during the day, and we have to extend the day for those youngsters. Then we have the embedded work, which is key to what we've been able to do this year, based on last year, is the kids get their normal program, and then they get this as a supplement. So they're getting double doses, instead of taking them out of the mainstream program so they can't catch up. So if things work out well, we'll transition to seventh grade. That's what we're planning for next year. Small group, because we won't need as many. And then we also pilot, how many go at fifth grade at the elementary?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
We have Elsworth South and Great Plains.
We've tried to get it there, but the challenge, we've talked about that pie thing, I'll talk to you a little bit later about it, is time. So we're doing it before school or after school in order to get, to really make a difference there. Hopefully, they'll decrease the need at sixth grade. But we started last year as a pilot, and it's worked out well. We doubled it this year, servicing more kids between sixth and ninth grade. This sort of, so yes, we're gonna increase it, but probably we're gonna look towards the middle school, the elementary school. Now, there's a program we talked about here. Imagine Learning, which is similar, that they're having some success with. So we might be able to utilize that one differently. So we're looking at, looking at, it's similar.
So does typically the gap from sixth grade?
Five to six.
Yeah, going five to six. The reading level, couple of level gap, is, do you find that at the end of the program, it reaches grade level? Or when you get into seventh grade, is that like when the interventionist kicks in?
So all students that come to the program are a little bit different, and there's a range of levels that students enter the program at. So while we may see two years' worth of growth, or a year and a half worth of growth out of a student, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're applying grade level. Some students, you know, zip right up there, they just needed some extra foundational work, and then they're on their very way. Some students need a little bit more time. And so, and so while we would like to see, you know, if I had a blank checkbook, I would, you know, I, every kid would get every service all the time, you know. But the reality is that it is a very expensive program, and while we have found some success with it... But the reality is that it is a very expensive program, and while we have found some success with it, the reason why we're able to put it in sixth grade is because it's a condensed funneling spot for students. So you can buy, you can outfit one entire room and service a hundred some odd kids that go through that room, compared to try, if you try to service a hundred twenty-five kids across five elementary schools, you have to outfit five classrooms, train five teachers, all that is very expensive. So it exacerbates the cost. And so the reason why we have it in sixth grade is because it's a funneling spot. Now, the goal is to try to remediate some, you know, address some of the issues, and I think so a lot of the changes that are occurring at the elementary, and some of the great work that Chris is doing right now, is designed to kind of help close that gap that's occurring there. And so eventually, those resources, we want to push those down to elementary, because-
Catch it before you get-
Catch it before it comes up. The goal is not to move it up and out, but to move it down and backwards. And really, all of the resources should be flooding into the elementary schools, right, in order to achieve that and not going now in that direction, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Did you have any points, please? One thing, before we left Richard's question, we have a very strong digital environment for parent resources, and we're sharing it with them constantly, making eye contact with them. Here, look at you, Richard, there's a wealth of information on the math piece. FACE, the Family Community Engagement Center, and these programs, just sent Sal and myself a note talking about including parent engagement strategies in our school improvement plans. And as Chris said, if you're a Title I school, you're required by federal law to have a parent engagement piece. We're talking about having that in all school improvement plans. The other thing, I split this side up again, it was a really nice little vignette right now to talk about, the two challenges time and people.
Okay, um, would you call it?
Would you guys be kind enough to introduce yourselves, as far as, as well as kind of your specialties, please?
Thank you.
Kara Kazemirok, K-12 Humanities Curriculum Administrator, the district, sorry.
Chris Zulina, Associate Principal for Instruction, six eight.
Harry Ross Alley, K-12 San.
Chris Prus, K-5, Director of Literacy.
Nate Martin, Associate Principal.
And in the back?
And Augustus.
Hi.
Augustus Long, did I sell bilingual languages?
And Rachel's here as well, who is our elementary arc.
Rachel, you guys are responsible for that thing?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, they are, they were, I said last week, this place looks awful, I'm not what you did.
Thanks, Sal.
Rachel, I think the question here, the-
If I could, Dr. Seven, so, so one question, so are we trying to concentrate enough? Maybe not concentrate is the right word, but more consistency as far as the curriculum through elementary and then feeding up through, because I know there's always been a concern in that regard.
Well, that's, that's why-
The coherence plan, right.
You go up there, well, we try to agree to what are we doing at each of these levels. That's why there's one for middle. And the API, which was part time this year, it was whole time, meets with the principals once, once a week for sort of collaboration. Then we hired, we stipend two elementary principals in that plan. They meet with the elementary principals to make sure there's cohesion among them. And they focus on these three, these items here, in each of the buildings, for coherence. So we can, at least if they go to Danbury, we know the youngsters are having this kind of exposure around this best practices. Now, we have, I'll let someone speak to it, there's instructional rounds, and we'll talk about how that plays into the implementation part, which is important.
And yet, and yet, we still talk about fidelity.
That's right.
Why, after all these years, why is, why do we still have to say people are not following the curriculum?
There isn't a good answer.
There is no good answer.
But I will say that the instructional rounds, it started last year, two years, no? It's taken a more of aggressive role the last two years, going out and looking, and not inspecting, but making sure there's adherence, and where there is a disconversation. So all of that helps, along with getting a better idea of what we're doing. And now, everybody, part of this stuff is everybody knows what we're doing, then there's a resource part as well. That's a hard part, and then that's what we're coming around now, the resource. As, you know, we'd love to have more math interventions, but can we put more Read 180? I mean, that's kind of balance, we need to look through the budget. When we start the cutbacks, right, that's when we start planning.
Adjustments.
So, I mean, all of that has, but you think there's better adherence, more coherence, that we're able to talk about. And, you know, look for us, new walk around, and say, it's actually happening. Do you think we're getting better at it?
Well, it's just difficult to have all of these people do this work and then not have it being done in the classroom. It kind of defeats the whole purpose of closing that achievement gap, which is what we're trying to do with this coherence plan. So how do we get everybody on board to say, this is how you're going to close the gap, this is how we're going to get better students, this is, I don't know.
Today, we started doing, each, each building has an improvement plan. It's pretty comprehensive, we sat, we met with John Brooke. And then there's an implementation part of it, and an observation part. We're getting better, better at it, you know. You know, sometimes it's not just about taking names and doing other things.
Well, it's showing, it's showing successes. If you can show success, I'm sure people will get on board faster, right?
Yeah, and I think the data stuff, Bill mentioned, good, better, and different. The data that we're using, and we started now, are showing some things in what we're doing. So people can't say, well, you know what, what's happening? Here's what's happening, and it's not lying. Some of it needs resource PD work, but we've got to do it. That's why that Pi thing, which is full of word in other ways, in terms of what we're doing, quite frankly, because it's tough to do, we've had to modify it, and making sure people do that, because there are things not being done. Which is, and that's why Chris and Pam now spend their time at K-5, giving support. And that's, we've done some reorganization to do that. I think, all that said, I think we're getting better. But I think for special education, you want to talk about if your kids participate in 180 and 44? It says another group.
Yes, so we had students participate in both programs, Read 180 and System 44. System 44, we trained a group of special education teachers that did it for, some of our students have significant disabilities, particularly in the phonics domain, and they made some very nice gains. We also did some, you know, kind of an inclusive programming with the Read 180, where they participated in the typical Read 180 class. And again, what I liked about the program is a lot of the research supports the achievement of students with special needs, and I think our students definitely did well in year one. I think part of it is, it's a pretty prescriptive model, as far as how to teach the program. So I'm hopeful that in year two of implementation, we'll see for all students, not just special ed, that the achievement will hopefully grow even more, because I think our teachers are getting better at it. The other piece to, you know, we've got a lot more assessments going on, both for special ed and regular ed. I think we've got the ongoing assessments in the curriculum, so the common formative assessment, where teachers are coming together in data teams. So if we're all teaching reading, we all will get the same data. And you have some of those careful conversations about, why are your students doing much better than my students? We've also added in the STAR program, it was initially an initiative through, to gain data through special education. And that's kind of outside, that is a norm reference assessment, to say, okay, these students, regardless of what level they started at, are they growing where we would expect them to grow? So it's giving us kind of twofold data, which I think is helping us have some of those conversations and identify some of those needs.
Thank you. Richard, do you have a question?
To redirect to you, to Kara, but Chris, do you think that we as board members can help you change your word not to do that job, because you guys do a great job, but to promote what you're doing to the schools? So that is a case in point. If there are schools other than Title I schools that we need to influence, we have or we are earmarked, for lack of a better word, with each school as a PTO. This might be something that we could drill down, and when we go to these PTO meetings, you know, make it a worthwhile comment or presentation to get the parents of that, you know, at least interested, if there's a void in three or four of the elementary schools that may not have this particular program, or may not share your thoughts. But again, you know, we're here to help, as well to, you know, not only to sit around periodically around a meeting, but we can take your ideas and share them. And if you think it's worthwhile, that we can help, I think you reach out, let us know. All right? And don't just worry, do a better job.
The other side of population, the board needs to be calculated, we have a very aggressively growing bilingual population, L population. Some schools don't even have a achievement gap, because the minority's enjoying it. You know what I mean? So our approach to this, for consistency, really helps us across the board. Why don't you finish your work, we're doing maybe else, so imagine learning.
So, as you saw from the presentation, we have a pilot program being implemented this year at six elementary schools. It's called Imagine Learning, and as it was alluded to, it's a very well-known, research-based program. We just started, we don't have any data that gives us any idea of where we are, but we do have some analytical data that shows that there's a high level of interest. And it's one of those programs that, similar to other initiatives from the YALL bilingual department, that is about good teaching, not just for Ls, but for all students. So that's the good news. At Ls, for example, the idea was to start implementing the program with Ls students, and the principal has determined that it was actually a good tool to do and implement with all kids. So at kindergarten classes, for example, all kids are taking attention to the program. So we have high expectations for that program in terms of accelerating. I think Dr. Glass alluded to the fact that the only thing we can try to do is to accelerate language acquisition. We are up to, I don't want to give you a number, because I might be wrong, because the numbers change badly, but the last number I heard was over twenty-eight hundred Ls students in Danbury. Those of you who were with me back in nineteen ninety-seven, may remember, we had six hundred Ls students when I started, so that's twenty-eight hundred now. That's a challenge. An additional challenge, in addition to time and resources, and time is the big thing for Ls, obviously, is the fact that we are now experiencing a huge influx of students who don't come well-equipped in their own language in terms of literacy. So they don't speak English well, and they don't have that background knowledge that allows them to perform at their level. So that's an additional change, challenge. If you remember, we have implemented some newcomer programs at the middle school and the high school. The after-school program also targets those students, we call them SIF, students with interrupting formal education background. Everybody's dealing with the same problem around the nation, not just in Connecticut. But if you don't know anything in your native language, you hardly will learn anything in English, so you have to start basically from scratch. At Danbury High School, just to give you an idea, this is a real fact, we have seventeen-year-old students with equivalent to a second-grade education. So those students will have a hard time graduating in four years. The state is considering five- to six-year graduation programs. I attended a presentation last week where I was told that there is a program called Free Grade Nine Programs, so that we have a one-year of intensive literacy, language acquisition support, and then they start as typical nine grades. So there's all kinds of sorts and challenges, but numbers and time is a big issue. The other thing that I would like to go back is, if you remember from our presentation a couple of years ago, the best kept secret in Connecticut is the fact that, not just Danbury, but many other school districts are actually experiencing success in terms of their YALL population. And I'm referring to the fact that the target set by the state for English proficiency progress back to two thousand and three, when we were required to start submitting data to the state, we in Danbury have consistently met those two targets, meaning the percentage of students who make progress towards English proficiency, and the other target is the percentage of students who actually attain proficiency as measured by what is called the English Mastery Standard. It's the Los Links, it's the test that we are required to administer annually, and that measures English proficiency only, nothing else. So as I said before, we consistently beat those two targets way above the target set by the state. So just to give you an idea of how complex this success story is told by the median state, is for example, the target set for attaining proficiency as measured by a level four or five on the Los Links test is around thirty percent. In Danbury, we have consistently been around fifty, fifty-five, fifty-six percent, which is almost two-fold the state target. Some of you remember, you know, from the previous president. So while the state sets the target for attaining proficiency at thirty percent, then they require something like eighty percent, ninety percent on the standardized achievement test. So if I'm not proficient, I can only perform at my level, so I should not be expected to be successful as measured by an academic achievement standardized test. So there's discrepancy in terms of what's reliable and what's valid. But again, I think the most important variable that we need to bring to the table is time. And the only thing we can do from our side is provide these interventions that eventually will accelerate the language acquisition process for these provisions.
Could I just ask a question? I think earlier, there was a question asked as board members. This information was brought to us, we listen to it, we hear the bad, and we hear the good. There's nothing that we can do besides sit and listen to help parents understand a little bit better as to how to help their child, and that's a concern of mine. How would we get the parents so they can understand better? And, I'm, yeah, because I was working with a young lady from King Street, and I'm telling her with her math, and she says to me, oh, Miss Cool, we can't do it that way, because teachers don't want you to do it that way. And I think when you, when you're working with a parent, the parent don't understand why the teacher does not want her to do it that way. And I have a problem with the teacher telling a student, if fifty and fifty is a hundred, yeah, it's a hundred, but show me how you got to a hundred. You know, and I know I'm antique to most of you young people, but, you know, we've worked and did math totally different. But I think you have to have something to let the parents know, and the parents would say to me, well, I can't help it, because she said the teacher don't want her to do it this way. There has to be some type of connection with the parents to make this better for the parent and for the student. And for me, as a board member, to be sitting here, and we hear this, yeah, we're getting better, and this is the first time this is happening, you know, we're going to look at the numbers later. So I guess my final question is, there's nothing that can be done as a board member to help support the parent, so they can understand better?
Maggie, you have something?
Yeah, I think, you know, Kara mentioned earlier with the Khan Academy, and one of the things that we've been playing around with at the high school, it's got to play small before you launch it to over three thousand families, is the idea of how to utilize our existing systems to communicate exactly what you're talking about, some of that information. So at the high school level, one of our great frustrations is lack of parent attendance at the meetings that we discussed earlier about, you know, so I presented every year about the Common Core and what it looked like and why it was different. We had things posted on the website, there's those kinds of materials. It's hard to gauge those, that's how often those are accessed, right? So I can't, can't give you the statistics. But with Power School, we are able to push out information to families. And so the high school has done a little bit more, I think, with utilizing that system just by virtue of need, because we have so many courses and teachers. It's been a really great way for us to communicate internally about student progress. So we can utilize that to push out as well. And so one of the things that we're looking at is how to do an info blast to our families through email, because the phone calls, everybody's been a little tired with us. So, you know, how can we share that type of information? And so we have a lot of parents, guardians, families, who access live information about their students' grades and progress in Power School. Now, again, our grade setup is different than elementary, and so I don't know if it lends itself to that. But the feature to share that information out is a really powerful one. I'll tell you that one of our biggest hurdles has been getting that information from the parents. So one of the things that would be extremely helpful is ensuring that we have accurate email and phone number, because we can't blast you if we don't know where you are, right? The other tool that we have available, the six through twelve, is something called Naviance. And so we send a lot of information about college planning, career interests, virtual campus tools. campus tours, and parents have accounts to that. So at our open house, what we'll be doing is, while we're bottom captive, you know, shuttling people in the media center, "Are you signed up for Power School? Are you signed up for Naviance?" We share scholarship information that way, internship information that way. So the biggest challenge for us has been getting the accurate information. But once they're there, because again, people work this late nights and everything else, and so they can't always physically be there, but with that information, it's available all the time. So I think that the accuracy of emails in particular is something that we're struggling with.
Let me just bring this to closure, because we're handling a lot of business, as we know. We would be very remiss if we didn't say publicly that our teachers, our coaches, our lead teachers, department heads, our administrators are working, are collecting tables on. That is the day for a teacher, and you can see how jam-packed it is. When you have somewhere in the area of maybe eight hundred teachers or more, think about getting eight hundred people to do the same thing with fidelity is very, very difficult. We'll always be pushing against this tide, but we clearly are getting better, and we're much more focused. So I just publicly want to recognize, I know on behalf of Seth and the board, the older jobs that all of our folks are doing, really putting their best foot forward, working progress, I could all, but they're working tables on. Thank you very much.
And for the board, you know, we get Pollyannaish here, this is really difficult, teachers are working pretty hard, there's pushback, I guarantee. Because what we have had to do is taken a step where it's a top-down kind of thing, and it doesn't ever go well. You have to understand that. But I think the step to do that is to bring some unity of purpose and some focus around deficits. I think at some point we all hope that we can release, because it does create some creativity problems and the art of teaching, and you will hear that. And it's a real pull on us when we go around, knowing there is a better way to do it. But I can't look at you and say, "We have this going on in the district, and everything's unexperienced," because that's what was happening. At some point, we'll get better at it, and we can release some of that. So that's what we, when we talk with teachers and do the PD, some of it is a catharsis of what they're doing, because it's changing their behavior, how they're giving instruction. Even though I have the resources now, some people still feel as though, you know, every minute that pie of the day is taken up with, "When are these kids going to be kids?" As well, it's a good point, when are they going to be kids? But many kids can't read, that are our kids. Many kids with a forty-five percent gap in sixth grade, with demonstrated data over time, you can't dollar that. So, you know, it's not all pie, and it's not the liquid we're down here. We have some real issues, and we're working through it. Don't worry, I think our teachers are working hard, we're just trying to all work smarter and figure it out. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, Seth. Please allow the arrangements, you so sometimes will flip.
Not really, but I will. So legislative agenda number five, just so the board knows, remember last year we had a few things? We've tried to relegate it to this, provide a comprehensive banking school funding form, applicable state life for both foster and inter-district sending and receiving districts, because there's, Joe just came to meeting, they reduced that as well. Specifically, one of the things that we need to do there, you have a magnet school that was not your magnet school at its inception, and it became our magnet school my first year here. How it happened, I don't know, but I think it's a welcome thing. I've said it right along, it's a good thing for us. But it's based on a formula for reimbursement, and if calculus is based on no more than sixty percent of our youngsters that would be present at that building, what's happening enrollment around the district here is being reduced, then we cannot mandate folks to send their kids to that program. There's no contract. This is not part of the chef case. So consequently, what's happening, that sixty-fourty split is being encroached upon. We may fall beneath the sixty percent at some point. If we do, it jeopardizes property. So we're looking to be all harmless for that. And that's why we'll be working with our legislators to make sure that if a young grandfather does send, because that really is a problem. So you talked with the mayor about that already, so he understands. And you can't blame the districts, you have some districts that have graduated class, maybe six hundred, and their kindergarten class is two hundred. So it's a reality, it's, you know, they can't keep sending kids here. So I understand that, but by another helping, it's going to hurt us. And we have a hundred and forty, is it a hundred and fifty out of district, or something like that?
To the next slide.
So we got to be careful. So that's something we're working on there. You know all about ECS to be redesigned, right? Most of us was at, we had the night with the candidates, that's something they want to take on, we're going to help them take it on, it's an idea. The municipal with Mark and his leadership have produced a document that they feel would be beneficial in calculating ECS, it does help us, and quite frankly, which is good. And CAPS also has put one together that helps us, us being urban districts, right? Not so much suburban ones, but it helps the urban districts. So we want to focus on that. Maintain funding, the local needs to support adequate education opportunities, including early college. We were promised a few years ago to go into DECO, and we did. And they changed leaderships at the college/university level, so they sunset the program with four districts, and they only gave us funds for one year, and I said this last week, and we're trying to get the fund of four districts that have stayed true and have run the program. We have two cohorts in it, Norwalk is the other, one of the early ones, they have three cohorts in it. So we're trying to get funding to sustain that. It's about a quarter million dollars a year that we could use for that. Fully fund special education access costs. Last year, how much was access cost?
One point four mill.
And one point four million. That goes to the town, that comes to you. But, you know, we get an allocation in the town, more resources to the town, more helps us. They don't fully fund that. They'll fund it maybe, they fund it twice a year, they'll give you half of what you apply for.
Sixty-five percent.
And then last year, we wound up sixty from that. So they don't give you a hundred percent of what you owe, they give you sixty-five And then the ELL students, all the forms that we look at, try to recognize, in the science numbers, we're at point four percent of our kids, as Russo said, it takes more money. You've heard me say that it's probably, if it costs you eleven thousand to educate a kid, you know it's much more, rather than ten thousand, half as much if there's a student in need of more help. I mean, that's kind of the company, so it's thirteen thousand, half as much. We need more money to give these youngsters, more time, teach these people more training. This doesn't happen magically, and youngsters are coming in more and more needing. Address the achievement gap, continue to increase access through the childhood programs and assessment. Today was at a readiness meeting, and every department has been asked to take ten percent off of their budget for next year as they build the budget. We're at a one-point-two-five billion-dollar deficit, one-point-two-five next year. That money is being taken away from programs across, and it's being taken away from the early childhood program. We have the youngsters coming to kindergarten right now, and I tell you, they're not prepared enough, they're even with the programs that we have. They are woefully behind how to address themselves in a school, how to function within a school, forget about doing the foundation work, we can't, that's going to happen. And we need to reexamine the efficacy of this secondary reform. I think that will look well enough alone, they only add more credits to what then, they want us to do pathway to careers by increasing more credit, then it's less likely for kids to go out in the community to do work. So why they're doing, I think they did it a few years ago, I think you've heard me say this, so much status felt that Connecticut was behind the eight ball, that we were a state lower third percent that had less than twenty-five credits graduation. But in fact, they look at most high schools, typically, seventy-five percent of the kids have less than twenty-five percent. So why are they doing this? I don't know. And they're throwing some other things in there in terms of experience that I don't know how they have a manage. So we're asking them to look at that. Maximize resource instructional time provided, set up a volunteer and the district collaboration, stuff, it's fine. Continue to focus state department of education resource support local districts rather than enforcement of instructional mandates. Somebody said there's like five hundred term loan mandates, and about fifty percent of them are unfunded. The graduation departments just sent me one example of the things. Special education is another, we're mandated, and then we don't get reimbursed and forth. And reduce the number of state assessments, permanent districts organize their own assessment system for each transitional grade. Instead of testing at a grade level, how about thinking about term loan grades, fifth grade, eighth grade, and then high school. Then we have our forms to monitor students and don't overburden us with the assessment fees. So those are the things we're going to focus on for the district. We meant, the next step would be, we're going to make it a lobbyist, show-taking, formalize it, to try and place this into the mayor's agenda. I guess he has a timing, he meets with the community, talks about what our priorities are, these are the priorities.
The coalition.
The coalition.
And the coalition group also is, has met with you and bought into this, so that their challenge now is to take these points so that we're in harmony with the district superintendent. They met a couple of weeks ago, have about ten to fifteen people which have signed up to be their core, I'm going to call it, as their executive base. They're going to go through a reorientation relative to finances from, it's presented by Kenny Roy, and also Joe's going to re-educate them relative to shortfalls in the budget. And their task is going to be, take these items and then working with the city and working with the lobbyists, is to then target the people in Hartford as to how we can make that case and support it, is to justify why Danbury needs these efforts. So we're finally got to the point that we're working together, and it's not only a complaint by the district's board of education to say that we need more money, or we need this, but that we have a community that's doing this outside of the board, headed up by a inclined who is also, I think, chair of the high school governance council. So there's independence of the school board, and it's based on community people, including students, parents, and this, you know, so, you know, I look for this to be very, very successful, and everybody going in the same vein to achieve this particular objective.
Okay, so Shelter Art Portals, I think we're going to see some, actually?
Yes, we have, we have spring months around, after the long processes finished up, some issues with the city permit, permitting, I actually have a plans email last night, we just had to get our permits done. Delivery is November thirtieth right now, on site, delivery doesn't necessarily mean occupancy, my sense is probably at least a few weeks after that till we're all moving along, but they all moving along well. It's complicated, say basically, yeah. We just, I just wrote a letter so they can be permitted to transport across state lines, because obviously they come on a tractor-trailer like Georgia, so there's homeland security and a bunch of stuff, you have to document it, you have to then transport it to Georgia, so it's been an experience, it's a little, but yeah, moving along, furniture's ordered and active weight distribution, so we're there, moving along.
Bus app?
Bus app, we launched a pilot at Shelter Stanley Ruff on bus one. You know, not, parents were happy, there was a couple that actually accessed the app and using it, tracks the bus as it gives you estimated pickup and departure times. We'll add more, probably add more formally in the coming weeks, but yeah, all moving along.
You think maybe by December?
Yeah, yeah, we're moving along. We can send alerts, the bus are in late, we can target that run in particular, if bus breaks down, that kind of stuff, a lot more busy, so thank you.
Thank you. So is there anything you want to add to magnet school funding?
As Seth said, we had a coalition meeting, they're forming a magnet school coalition. It was formed a couple of years ago, a funding magnets overall. Obviously, the goal right now is to maintain funding, there's a lot of pushing and shoving as far as related to formulas around magnets. You'll see in the document prior to the board, our challenge is really enrollment plan. With that sixty-fourty split, as your setting towns drop, we have to actually drop our enrollment to keep up that sixty-fourty line. So originally, we had, I believe, our high mark was about four hundred, four hundred and twenty-two students there.
Four sixty.
So in order to decline, we've been seeing, we have to drop our numbers as well there in the school, so it's been a challenge. Plus, you always have shifting kids, some kids may opt to enroll out. New town, for example, has forty seats, when I got here five years ago, they now have twenty seats going into next year's lottery. So at seventy-six hundred dollars per student, plus there's a contribution we charge to students, each, to each district, seventeen hundred. The funding is clearly a challenge on the outset. We brought one-point-eight million dollars, what the grant is, that was for sixty percent cut already, we can start going up for it and what that's going to be, so that's.
Do you think it's, one of my thoughts is, is this something that we refer to refinance committee as to, because I do have some thoughts as to perhaps short-term, what we may be able to do, and there's a long-term possibility to go after, but it may be something that in the finance committee we can pick around and come up with some thoughts.
There is a shortfall, as Joe said, a couple hundred thousand, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars we do, that we're losing.
I mean, we could put off the conversation.
Yeah.
You know, there's not a heck of a lot that we can do. We charge a contribution, we get the reimbursement, we can say we have no control, or the best thing we can do and talk about is, again, the sunset, and us not lose money precipitously. So, yeah, we can talk about strategies, but those, then the last strategy is simply, you extricate everybody that does not, that is not a Danbury student, and you take over the school. Yeah, well, I figured that. And the first year here, you may recall, somehow, they didn't fill all those seats, remember, you all remember that? They wound up giving us eight hundred thousand dollars, because it was going to cost us that much money, we didn't have the seats filled, you know, and I think we asked, well, what if, and at that time, it was the first year of school, it was the second year, and, you know, if that would happen, who would have to pay for school? Because Danbury did not pay for that school. That was given to us by, taxpayers paid for, state, and rather than rescuing, becoming a rescue in a Danbury school. So we didn't do the brick and mortar thing. But I think we could jump over that, or the thing of it is, is again, that severe, and the state saying they're not willing to sunset this, I think you need to answer a question, you know, you willing to flip the bill for out-of-town students, my guess is, and get a recommendation for me to do that, nor should you in terms of, you know, we have fiduciary right to our taxpayers. So it may come down to that, that's something we've talked about, just in concept. So, you know, I don't want to scare anyone, we don't want that to happen, but we're asking for some relief from the legislators first, but we can talk about it. That was pleasant. Anything else on that?
No. That's not good, that's not good.
Thank you.
And my thought is to remind everybody that the eighteenth is coming up, the eighteenth to nineteenth, and everyone is going to be paid as, that is, that we're going. I sent it, I sent you, you can't hear anyone, Andrew.
I think, I only, the mic is flipped underneath here.
Is somebody on the mic here?
We have to have a record one more minute, okay, guys? Then, makes us not a big save, all right? That's what I represent. It's really good, and the kids serve, serve, you know, and, who puts the turkeys in? Because I remember I used to have to put two of them every day.
They stopped the board from stopping us.
Yes, we're doing that.
What, what did I say?
Well, we used to put the turkeys. Like I would buy two turkeys. Well, not, I wasn't feeling one. No, I didn't know that, because. No, I think you did in the morning, because I'm stuck. That's a ruler. We use ovens. So try to go, it's really a lot of fun. You don't have, you don't even have to talk to anyone, you just try. All right, anything else that I see? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Richard, I didn't mention it. December fifth, I could feel him tell, I could tell him, talk about it. The community board forum, it's like a beast party. Please, everybody come.
I said no PTO.
We need us to be there. And the city YPTO is coming, all right, plus those other parents are being invited. It's important that we're representing also, since we're the ones that are asking for the changes.
Again, this is part of the Stand Together Make a Difference assessment survey that they did with the high school kids regarding trends in drug use and certain other aspects. So it's, I think this is, this is a very, it's a good glimpse that's directed towards parents. So I'm hoping that a lot of people attend, and that if you guys see the flyer, you have the flyer, send it around to people and try to get as many parents there as possible.
And for those of you that are on Facebook, which is just about all of us, when you see it, just keep sharing it, all right? Until the date, so that we can get it out. And these people are getting elected by, it's in social media, so you just get it out. The other thing is, is when parents, friends, old preschools, a last group, because that was the question. City YPTO, you know, they're mostly elementary schools, you know, our kids are involved in surveys like that. And they found that the average drinking age in our children just carries eleven. And all three mothers that are sitting there were, "Oh, I think we should go." I mean, okay, so we know that, yes, Sal.
Now, before we leave, I would just like the board consensus on the, I was given the chore to find out from K about the evaluation form, was a different type of form. Yes, there is a sort of a combination. So I need a charge from you, do we want to keep this and we look at this form at the beginning of the year? Or we just take a quick ten or fifteen minutes at the next board meeting and just look at the form? It's your, it's up to you.
So we kind of did a next meeting, right?
Yeah.
I'd say it should have taken around fifteen to twenty minutes by next board meeting. And I think, you know, it will help the person that's going forward to do the evaluation, you can look at the form and see if it's something that you want to follow through on, or keep what we continue to do. So I'm, I'm at your, what you call it?
It's spoken.
Okay. So everybody in agreement that we meet a half an hour before the next board meeting? I want to just go over this and then we can turn it over to the committee starting two thousand and seventeen. Okay, good, thank you.
Twenty second, we're going to meet at thirty.
Yes.
Thirty to twenty second.
So we have to try to stay in.
The whole board?
Yes.
So you're gonna. I just got to figure out, yeah, I mean, if you have the evaluation, when do others come? It's one thing if we're going to call a board meeting at six thirty, that's another thing. So I just need to know.
Do something to the evaluation.
So it's a committee meeting. If others want to come, then you could, okay, then that makes.
Okay, thank you.
And is there anything else anyone would like to discuss?
Oh, there was, I just went to a couple of seconds over. I went to the DHS homecoming game, the football, which they won.
In one year?
Very nice, and a series of losses.
Yes.
I went to a couple of cross-country meets. The state opened up in Wickham, and freshman invitational over a very while, which were well-attended and well-cheered. And I went to the Spooktacular at DHS with the kids dressed up, saying, they did a thriller thing from Michael Jackson, and they had the little kids come and parade and went up great. It was really a nice, a nice thing. Gave candy to all the kids and everything, so. Very nice setup and well-received.
Peter, is there anybody else that we're reporting from the school?
We do, well, we attended the Harvest Festival at Millard Primary, which was, I believe, Friday the twenty-eighth. And it was, I, I, this is our third year, I think, there. And I think it was the most attended, I, it appeared to be the most attended Harvest Festival. They had hayrides that went through Park and Lot down the west side, which was a big hit, and Mr. Daly provided those. But I thought it was a great event, and there were a lot of kids attended in costumes. So I think Dr. Cronin took a bunch of pictures and posted them, so.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just real quick, tomorrow at King Street, they have an annual veteran ceremony. That's, I believe, starting at eight thirty. It is always very well-attended and nicely done, so. Also, two students from King Street School will be reading essays on what a veteran needs to make. Those students won a contest back when the Walk of Honor took place earlier in October. They actually had the chance to work with the coordinator of that event with, in order to choose these two students, and they'll be reading their essays tomorrow at this event, so.
Rachel.
Rachel?
I have a quick question.
So you do want to speak?
I do, well, if you know me, I'd love to speak, actually. I always have something to say. I'm actually getting my internship for my O ninety-two, so I'm working on multiple projects this year to acquire my O ninety-two, my certification to be an administrator, so part of why I'm here. But I do have a question. You've mentioned some events that you've gone to. As a board member, how often, or are, what, are you required, if you are required, to attend events at the elementary, middle school, and high school? I know that you're assigned to attend all these schools.
No, we're not assigned, we actually pick.
Oh, you pick?
Yeah, we pick, yeah. It's not an assignment, we actively participate. And most everybody takes at least one school, someone has had two. And we try to retain the PTO functions, or the functions in the school. It's one of the reasons why we have the recognition in the beginning of our meeting that came out of the fact that we, a couple of times, have planned schools in our meetings. Because it's very convenient for staff to do that. I asked Sam to, Sam representatives from a different school each month, yeah, each meeting, so that they talk about their school and stuff. And then we all participate in different events when we're told about them. If we don't, if you don't go to the PTO meeting, you know, I've asked the different principals and PTOs to notify us when something's coming up.
And is that list on the website of who's assigned?
I'm sorry?
Is I, like, for your positions, what schools you go to, like, is that on the website so that?
I don't know if it is on our emails. Does it, isn't on there? No, it's not.
Because then it's, you know.
We have a copy here in the office that you, that we all have a copy of.
Because I sit here as a Pembroke teacher, and I believe that you're, Richard, you're on the, you come to Pembroke.
Yeah.
And I actually have your grandson and Zay here in my classes, in my class. He likes art. But to know that so that we can reach out, you know, and, and welcome you when we do have events so that you're more part of our school community environment.
That's what we try to do, and I think that's what pieces that a lot of people think are missing. But there are a number of us who do something powerful that.
I agree.
And, and we said, bless them. I mean, when I look around, we run into one of those, right, events, which is kind of.
Are there any schools or any, like, sorry, middle school or high school that there's less involvement, that people aren't reaching out to you? Say, come, see us?
No, I'll yell when they don't.
Okay.
We have the two schools, we have two high schools coming, and if they don't show up a couple of times, I'll call them next.
Well, not you guys, I'm not saying.
No, no, I mean, I've asked the school, I have very representatives, because ASN and the high school are not always here. And if they're missing one two times, I'll call them next week or later. And then if they don't talk about the music programs as well as the sports programs, I also talk about that too.
Thank you.
Yes, Sal.
One last thing. We've been talking, well, we have been listening for the last, I'd say, couple of months about minority, minority hiring and recruitment. And I was just stunned when I picked up the paper, November the third. And there was an article in there concerning all the different cities that are really having this problem. And it's not just Danbury. We know it's not just one set thing. We know that's a variety of things, why certain people don't want to come from. And we heard your presentation. I was amazed that there.
ARC, which is the Alternative Root Certification. We have ARC Tal, which is also kind of alternative root legal and alternative language instruction. And this is yet another program, but there is some debate going on.
Right, that's what I really wanted to understand, the debate, as to some people are really against it, and some people think it would bring in minority, you know. I just don't want the system to hire a person because of their minority. I think you have to have a qualification and have an opinion placed. So I just didn't understand it, and I wanted to hear more about it.
I think it's going to unfold in the weeks that come. I think that dialogue is going to get louder soon. I think more operations are going to come soon, more than later. But I definitely have it on my, on my wall.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Is that why we thought we were on the conference, where is that?
So that's the historic colleges and universities are joining a two-day program, how to remain instead of December, it's the first and second. It's similar to the program that we've attended in the past, where it's kind of a fair sort of model, but the chief talent office, it's from state from education, they're starting to be from state. And then there are these representatives from these schools. So we're going to go down, this year it's going to be a two-day event, so we're going to, we're going to go down and spend some time there networking.
Do we have to hear more about it?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that would be probably a topic of your presentation.
Because I think it's more, if I'm more informed, then when I hear someone talk bad about the board, then I can inform them more, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Eileen, just one other thing.
Yes.
High School Edition, want to try to a sites and facilities meeting, maybe next week, or, I was shooting for the next board meeting, but I know you got the superintendent's evaluation, so we'll see where we can link that in there. Because they got, we saw the schematics on the front entrance and everything else. Yeah.
You're going to board meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I could ask Antonio, I mean, it's just the question.
He said he wouldn't mind coming.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to him if you want. I mean, we were going to do. Yeah, we're going to do facilities, but I can, I'll talk to him about that.
Why don't you talk to him and see if that's.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, okay.
Because we like to extend our board meetings as far as long as we possibly can.